Good morning, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. We acknowledge the High Desert and Joshua Tree Video Conference Sites. We're going to start off with the pledge and invocation by our Vice Chair, Supervisor Rapp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, we have with us Pastor Tara Vincross from the Azure Hills Church in Grand Terrace. Tara serves as a senior pastor for Azure Hills and holds a Doctorate of Ministry degree from Andrew's Theological Seminary. She is the author of Deep Calling, a Christian Growth Series, and the children's book, God Loves Me and All of My Feelings. Tara and her husband Caleb have two children, Josiah and Ava. We welcome Pastor Tara today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the invitation to be present with you this morning. I invite you to bow your heads with me as we begin with prayer. Oh, God, we thank you for being able to call on you in the midst of the storm. We find comfort in your promise that you are with us, no matter what we are facing. As we continue to face the challenges of this unique time, we pray for courage, we pray for strength, we pray that our hearts would be open to being present with each other and the strength of this community. We pause right now to pray and lift up the people that are serving our country here at home and overseas, especially be close to their families as they're away from each other. We pause in the midst of this pandemic to remember today those who have perished this week. Even in this very room right now, we have those who have lost dear ones to them, the friends, the family, the neighbors, and coworkers that we miss. We pray for the families and friends of the 21,950 Americans whose deaths from COVID-19 were counted in the past seven days. We lift up the loved ones of the 97,106 people in this world whose deaths from COVID-19 were counted this past week. Our hospitals are in crisis, and those who are serving are exhausted in body and in heart. We lift them up to you right now. For all those serving as frontline workers in any capacity, we pray for strength for them to persevere in this crisis. These public servants in this room today are seeking to make a more perfect union. They lead and work to bring us together around what matters most. My prayer is that you would enable them each day. Give them strength they did not know they had. Give them vision for a tomorrow that can be different than today. Give them hope and a deep sense of knowing that we will be okay, that we will make it through the challenges that press upon us right now. My prayer, oh God, is that we would see one another as brothers and sisters and have the courage to act on behalf of one another, that we would see justice roll down like the waters and righteousness like an ever-flowing stream. Give us courage as we love, serve, and heal. Amen. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. We're going to move on to Memorial Adjournments. Supervisor Baca?
Thank you, Chairman Hagman. We had several people that passed in the 5th District, but there's two in particular I want to recognize, and one of them was Audrey Matthews. She was 86 years of age. She was actually a Commissioner for the 5th District for several years, longtime San Bernardino resident and an activist in the community, was very active in the African-American community, but also a professor at Cal State San Bernardino. And actually, she was my professor when I was attending the graduate program at Cal State. So Audrey was a great person. She's well-loved in the community, beloved, and then we're going to miss her dearly. And the other resident was a resident of Rialto. His name was Gary Rico. He was 62 years of AIDS when he passed, and he died of COVID. And he was a longtime activist in the city of Rialto. He actually was a retired postmaster in the city of Rialto, but also a police volunteer. Gave his time, gave his personal time, and I know that he put some social media posts in December letting the community know he was sick, and we lost him due to COVID. So our hearts go out to him and his family, and our hearts go out to all those that have passed in the 5th District. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Rufford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to recognize the life and contributions of Ken Willis. Ken was a resident of Upland and a former city council member there. If you ever had the opportunity to encounter Ken, you know that it would have been with a smile and with encouragement. He was deeply involved in housing policy. He also knew water issues inside and out, but more than that was a father and a husband of incredible dedication and love and passion. His presence in the community will be missed, and my deepest condolences to his family.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rapp?
Thank you. Sadly, we have lost three members of our county family recently. William H. Clinton was the first ever registrar of voters, Julie Reinerson, a former Land Use Services Director, and Dean Cochran, who is with Public Works. They all passed away recently, and we offer our deepest condolences to their family. In addition, I would like to recognize a City of Barstow worker, Jose Hermosio Morales, who passed away at the age of 32 after a long battle with COVID-19. He was a very fond, like, the City of Barstow enjoyed him immensely, and he will be missed. And he leaves behind a wife, a baby, and then a baby on the way.
Supervisor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also just want to, I have two people I wanted to note, but I also knew Audrey Meadows. I was also a student of Audrey's, and we were on the faculty together. Absolutely. Great, great instructor, fantastic person, and she'll be deeply missed by anybody that went to Cal State and knew her. A very, very special person. The other two individuals, Paul Russ. Many of you might have known him, many of the boards. He was former mayor of Asparia, passed away from COVID last Thursday, 61. Outstanding public servant, man of deep integrity, cared about the city of Asparia, always worked hard to make the city a better place to live. Throughout his health problems over the years, he was a fighter who always overcame his struggles with a lot of problems, but he always had great spirits and a kind word, and he will be missed by all who knew him, and my condolences are with his wife Lou, his entire family. The other individual I wanted to recognize is Patrick Fieran, who was a federal correctional complex Victor, excuse me, Victorville staff member, who also passed away from COVID at the beginning of the year. Started with the Bureau of Prisons, 2014, highly respected by those he worked for, his dedication and sacrifice of a reminder of all of our law enforcement and first responders and the conditions they face every day, with or without the threat of COVID. My thoughts are with his wife Kalina and his daughter Stella. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colonel. And then we all have, at this point, 10, 11 months into COVID, known people that have passed away by this horrible virus going away, and today is very solemn for all of us. I know people personally that have just passed the last couple of weeks. My former employee Jeremiah Brodsky's father, John Brodsky, passed away. Chino Valley Independent Fire District Board Member Sarah Evanger's husband, Mike Evanger, passed away last couple of weeks. Ontario City Council Member Deborah Postprada's father, James J. Dorse, passed away, a former Marine as well. And then we talked about Paul Russ and Ken Willis. And atop of that, 14 county employees have since passed from COVID. It's a very solemn moment for all of us to do everything we can to help stop the spread of this horrible virus and taking very good quality people away from San Bernardino on the databases. So I would like to, all of us, to please stand and give a moment of silence to all those who passed away from COVID. And turn it to reports from our CEO.
Nothing to report, Chairman.
Our county council?
Nothing to report this morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to special presentations, and we have a few to pass out today. And I'm going to read through all this first before I invite you up to accept the wonderful awards from ATC. It's my honor to today present three financial reporting awards to Ensign Mason, our auditor, controller, treasurer, tax collector, and his staff at ATC for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. The following two awards are presented on behalf of the Government and Finance Officers Association. First, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is the premier indicator of excellence in governmental accounting and financial reporting. To earn the Certificate of Achievement for the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the auditor, treasurer, collector has to meet the following demand criteria, which go well beyond the minimum requirements of generally accepted accounting principles. The second, the Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Fiscal Reporting. The GFOA has operated this award since 1991. To earn this award, ATC had to take information from, a lot of acronyms, sorry, the CARF to prepare a top-quality report that's made the county's technical financial information easily understandable by people without an accounting degree. So to allow our residents to look at what's going on, they have to make that report readable. Our third award is presented on behalf of the California State Controller. The State Controller's Award for County's Fiscal Transaction Reporting is given achieving the highest quality in California governmental accounting and financial reporting. These major awards reflect the professionalism, commitment, and dedication by the ATC staff. This high-level performance by ATC supports and exemplifies the Board of Supervisors' commitment to sound administration of the county finances. It's my pleasure on behalf of the Board to present these three awards to ATC, and we're going to bring Ensign up to accept all this and let you go from there. Ensign, come on up with the board, please. And I'm going to let you talk about each award separately, okay, and bring your staff up. The Ensign's done an outstanding job in this role of taking over the reins right up there. And I know you have different staff members for each award that you may want to bring up. We'll take the photographs separately, but you could talk about the first one. This first one is the Government and Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement in Excellence in Financial Reporting.
All right. I'm up here accepting these awards, but they are not my awards. They belong to our hard-working staff here. They did all the work. A lot of people don't know what a controller does. They don't control, really. They are the accountants of the county, and among their many other jobs they do is producing the various financial reports that are required of any large organization. This one is for the CAFER, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This is the everything-for-everything, but it's written for accountants. It's for the bankers, it's for the lenders, it's for the bondholders, people who know accounting. This is the, it's a very comprehensive, it's many hundreds of pages long. If you ever, if you ever have hard times sleeping at night, this is, this is the cure. So if I can bring our controller staff up here to accept this award? This is our Assistant ACC, Tori. Vanessa Doyle, our Chief Deputy Controller, and Erica Gomez. And I guess, is this the way we do it?
Yes.
Why don't you hang on to that?
We have to position ourselves between the sides. Final hold. Congratulations. Well, it's pretty much Selena and Emma's going forward. It really is beating. Congratulations. Well, it's pretty much Selena and Emma's going forward.
This award is for our CAFER. This is not a required thing that needs to be produced by law, but because the other report is written by accountants for accountants, this is the one that's written for the people. In an effort to increase transparency with the public, we produce a CAFER which is much easier to read. It may not put you to sleep as quickly as the, as a CAFER will. So this is the award for our CAFER, which is a public, a public-facing financial statement. for financial transactions reporting, our report to the State Controller's Office.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Ensign, and thank you for your great staff for making San Bernardino always look well. Yeah, go ahead. And next time, Ensign, you got to give me the little CAFER, CAFER, whatever, the, the way you say them, so I don't sound silly with those big acronyms. Thank you. Okay, next, we're going to take discussion item number 72 and get an update on COVID. A lot of information to pass on, even the last couple of days.
Thank you, Chairman Hagman, members of the board. Yeah, there has been a lot of information, and at the outset of this presentation, as we get it up on the screen, just want to pass along my sincere thanks to the entire county family, their continued hard work, not only in running the operations, all our rank and file, the good work that they continue to do is outstanding. These are interesting times, and the team is continuing to respond to situations quickly. And our, if we can go to the next slide here, we'll go over this morning, the regional stay-at-home order that's been lifted, the blueprint for a safer economy, just a quick reminder on that tiered system. We also have public health here to help with that. An overview of our numbers, both from the hospital side and the public health side. And we have ARMC leadership, Bill Gilbert here to help us with that. Vaccination process overview, that is the new frontier in the efforts as we work through COVID with our communities, and we have some information on the current state structure and our public communication outreach, and then some upcoming developments. Next slide, please. So as we were notified on Monday, the regional stay-at-home order is lifted. That effectively puts our county into the purple tier. We have here, for informational purposes, a bit of an overview of some of the limitations of the purple tier that include gatherings and outdoor restaurants, personal care services, et cetera. We are working to not only update our business sectors, but also within our own county departments, areas that overlap with these restriction loosening, how we can move forward. We go to the next slide here, and then what I'll do is I'll ask Corwin to come on up and just be ready. We have our current COVID-19 statistics of our purple tier, and because we didn't want to have microscopic font size, we're going to toggle between these numbers and the next slide. If we can go to the next slide, please, which shows the blueprint for us moving from purple into the red and then orange and hopefully the yellow. So I'm going to go back quickly to the previous slide and just allow Corwin to kind of walk us through these numbers and see if there's any questions that may come from the board.
Thank you very much. It's good to be with all of you this morning. I appreciate the opportunity to present. The adjusted case rate is one of the major indicators the state uses to dictate which colored tier a county falls into. Our rate is just below 60 currently. If you recall, just a week and a half ago, we were in the 80 range, and so we were making improvement, which is good news for us, but we still have a ways to go. The overall positivity is just above 16%, and it's slowly falling as well. It was in the 21, 22 range just a week, just over a week ago. So it's good progress that we're making, but again, that needs to be at 8% or less to move into the red tier. So still some work to do there as well. One of the things that we've done really well at over the last month or so is increase the testing. Currently, it's at 775 tests per 100,000. To meet the state's two times their median, we want to be a little bit higher than that, just shy of 900 is where it's set right now for two times that median, and that's slowly starting to drop. And the reason it's dropping, probably the primary reason would be that there's just a little less demand. As we see our cases and our positivity decline, some of the demand also declines, and so that's noteworthy. Then, the last kind of couple of slides, Bill can fill in the gaps, but the ICU capacity, as you know, with the regional stay-at-home order being dropped, they do a four-week projection, and ours was over 30% for our region. Locally, what we're seeing is still some, some impact in the ICUs, and this was the number most recently, as of yesterday, that we were at 11.3, which is better than we have been.
It's better than zero.
Yes. Yeah, the state has gotten rid of the adjustment factor, which made it actually a negative number, so that no longer exists. So this is currently what the state showed as of the 25th, which is yesterday, for both the county and regional ICU capacity. It gets a little confusing because they do a four-week projection. That's where they got the 33% that they had broadcasted yesterday, but that's four weeks out. So, but the current numbers sit right there as of the dashboard the state posted yesterday.
We have our hospital director, Bill Gilbert, here. If there's any questions about the ICU, otherwise, we'll go to the next slide.
Okay. We're going in the right direction, which is.
We are going in the right direction. It's good, positive news. We haven't had that for a while, and appreciate the team's hard work on those efforts. We'll go to the next slide, too, and now start talking about the current vaccination structure. The state has indicated that they'll be moving to an age-defined vaccination framework. I believe the details may be released as early as today. Currently, we're in Phase 1A, now Phase 1B and Tier 1. Fire and police are also open, and we're continuing to move forward with scheduling those vaccinations and getting folks geared up for that.
The age-defined vaccination framework that you expect from the governor's office as early as today, is anything different than what we're doing, trying to get residents 65 and older in?
I don't, I don't know. Let me see if Andrew has any information on whether or not they're going to go higher than 65, or if the, the state has indicated whether they will start at 65. Andrew?
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Andrew Goldfrack, Chief Operating Officer for Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. So as far as we know at this point, we haven't had a lot of indication as to what the age stratifications are going to be as they move from the tiering system that we have today to more of an age-based stratification. We haven't heard yet if it's going to start at 65, and then the next phase be 55, and so on and so forth. That is all still being worked out through CDPH, as well as all of the various committees that work in conjunction with the CDPH and the governor's office to look at not only age stratification, but also health equity as well. So that is still being determined.
Okay, Andrew's going to hang out with us just for a couple of slides more as we go to the next slide. I'm going to allow him to talk through the vaccination rollout and give some information. We're going to continue to bring information to the board on our, at our updates to explain the whole process, and I know that there's been some questions about how many of the clinics does the county directly work with versus to the state. We do have some clarification that almost all the clinics, the pharmacies, I should say, within the county work directly through public health, even though they will sign up through the state's CalVAC site, the distribution of the allocation comes through us. But I'll hand over to Andrew just to talk a little bit about the numbers up to our current point.
Thank you very much, Leonard. So to date, since we've started just over a month ago on December 16, we've received 152,600 doses combined between both first and second dose allocated to the county. As Leonard alluded to, this does not include the partnership for the skilled nursing facilities, as well as a smaller secondary allocation to what we call multiple, multi-county entities, which are the larger health systems, Kaiser's, Sutter's, and so on and so forth. So these are, this is the allocation that comes directly to the county, that is then reallocated to the non-MCE hospitals, the county clinics, pharmacies, and physician partners. Of that 152,600, we have vaccinated for a combined first dose of 68,497 between both the CalVAC's partners, which is all the private entities, and the Department of Public Health clinics. You can see the breakdown of first dose, which was representing about 76% of what we've been allocated, has been vaccinated in arms.
Andrew, that compares to what statewide, roughly?
The data is a little challenging across the state, but what we've been told is, on average, the state's around 30 to 40%.
So hats off to the entire team effort. I know, I believe we're number one in the state as far as percentage of getting it out, first shots out, and definitely well above average, and so thank you for all the team effort to try to get these out to our residents as fast as possible.
Absolutely. I do have a little bit of additional information, so also in addition to these numbers, because I know it's, it's a question that we're always looking at, and I know it's been brought up in the past. To date, 213 out of the 300-plus skilled nursing and long-term care facilities have received either a portion of their first or second dose, and of that, it's been equivalent to about 10,500 doses.
And Chairman, I would echo that, hats off to the partnership. What we're seeing is the way in which the county interacts with its other agencies like IHP, all the other fire departments and jurisdictions, our police departments, just seen a wonderful collaboration, and I'm very proud of the county leadership from our sheriff, our probation chief, our fire chief. We're thankful for folks like the CEO of IHP reaching out and offering resources. We've seen a lot of folks coming together to make this work, and I believe it's part of the secret sauce to the, to the success here, as we've moved and see that number as such a high percentage. And not to take away from the vaccination distribution team led by Mr. Goldfrack, their hard work, we're seeing some wonderful results there.
Supervisor?
Yeah, I want to compliment you on your work. I'm still very concerned about the, the patients that are 65 and above. This is a very rural county, with the exception of down here perhaps. This is a very rural county, with the exception of down here perhaps. I know when we were talking years ago about veterans, older veterans getting to the VA hospital, we had to make sure we had, be very aggressive in terms of motor pools, find out how they could get down there. It's tough if somebody is not ambulatory, obviously. In those conditions, I'm sure the mobile unit could help them out. But I was wondering, do we have help for those people that don't have transportation that can make it to a site? Because, you know, some of them are way out there. And we talked about needles before, and some of the other places, so I don't know. But the stats, I think you're doing a great job, and this is a tough, tough thing. I think it's working. And my second question was about, wasn't there a batch of one of the vaccines? Has that affected us? I know we're using Pfizer down here, but has that had a little bit of an impact? One of them was delayed because of some contamination issues?
Sure. Supervisor, I'll answer the first question. We are, at the end of the presentation, you'll see actual picture of one of the mobile units. The team is continuing to come up with ways to serve folks in remote locations, and the partnerships that we're developing, like with our Department of Aging and Adult Services, to figure out what's the best way to reach the populations that they serve that are in the most need. We have some plans, and those plans are continuing to develop. Our Department of Behavioral Health is also doing outreach with underserved communities to provide us feedback as to how we can adjust some of this approach. I'll let Andrew and possibly even Corwin, if he wants to come up, to fill the Moderna batch that there was some concerns about, and our interaction with the state and how that all shook out.
And Leonard, just before you get off to transportation, there's a, last year, I believe, a Supreme Court ruling that mandates that the healthcare plans provide transportation. So whether it's be IHP or any other one, they have to be able to, they have to provide, whether it's an Uber ticket or whatever the case may be, for that patient to get to the medical services they need. So we need to be coordinating those transportation issues with their primary insurance carrier, if they have one, and then we'll fill in the blanks somehow. But we want to make sure that everyone has the ability to get to where they need to get, as well as the multiple hundreds of sites we're having throughout the county, and the small, it's like on the small tier, the medium tier, which is our public health sites right now. And eventually, as we ramp up of more volume, 152,000 doses between first and second is not enough to treat a 2.1 million county right now. So we're all facing with the shortages of getting those in. But the transportation should be able to be coordinated. It's not something we have to do on our own, and some partnership with the providers. It should be.
That's a wonderful comment. We'll reach out to some of our providers and just dial that in, so that can be part of the solution.
Chairman?
Yeah. I have a couple of questions. You know, I appreciate the fact that, you know, we're one of the highest percentages in the state, and I think that's great that we've been able to get out the vaccine. But, you know, some of the concerns, that's actually been the number one call, at least for our office, I can't speak for my colleagues, but it's been the number one issue, has been the messaging and the communication. So a couple of things is when people assume that there's vaccine available, they think it's available for everybody. So one of the things we're not doing is we're not letting the general public know that there's only so much available. I think that message needs to be out there. The other thing in regards to the website is when people click through all of the forums and go to find out that there's, you know, no vaccines available, that's become very frustrating for many of our constituencies. And I guess my question is, if they register, do they have to go through the whole process again?
So we appreciate that...
That was a complaint I got yesterday.
Yeah, no, we appreciate that feedback. And the team is making a change. So prior to the change, yes, you had to register for first dose and then register again. The problem is, when all appointments are booked, it was a bit of a catch-22. You need the second dose, but you can't register. Later this week, the change is going to be that when you register, you'll get your first and second dose appointments made at the same time. So they'll be simultaneously assigned to you, so you won't have to go back in and try to get a second appointment. There's a slide, just after this, we'll talk about the communication side, because I know that there's been a lot of concerns, but...
Leonard, I'm sorry, I don't think that's what the supervisor was saying.
Oh, sorry.
When you go to our website, you had to fill out like four pages of information, and then say, "I'd like the appointment," and the system would say there, "That appointment isn't available. Pick another date." Then you had to fill out the four pages over again.
Yes.
Very frustrating, especially for elderly, but I'd be frustrated, too, if that happened to me, now I haven't tried to register on our site. So that's, and I know we're using the state system. Can we speak a little about how we're going to try to make it easier for people to make appointments, when we have vaccine available for them to make appointments?
Sure.
Thank you for clarifying that, but also just on another issue, like when it asks for gender, you click on male, and it asks you pregnancy issues. So that part of it, you know, constituent called and got that frustrated. But I know we're going to give some clarity on the state, but a question to Corwin, could I have Corwin come back? I didn't get a chance to ask him a question on the last slide, if you don't mind, or a couple of slides ago.
Sure, absolutely. And we'll go back a few slides, just so we can bring up that information. Was it that one or the...
One more.
One more. Thank you.
Yeah. And I'm, Corwin, I'm sorry, Chairman, I didn't get a chance to ask this question earlier, but I know you mentioned that the numbers are trending down. What would you say would attribute to the numbers going down, and what would our message be from the county going forward?
Appreciate that question. Yeah, so I think there's a number of things happening. We're finally through that whole segment of holiday after holiday after holiday, which just invited a lot of gatherings. So I think that's one of the things that has benefited us, that we're through that cycle. I think some of the efforts, the messaging has paid off. People are still being cautious, even though many have COVID fatigue. And then the other thing that we finally noticed, it looks like we finally hit that peak. So we knew it would come at some point, and the actual date that we hit the peak appears to be just between Christmas and New Year's, and we've been descending since. So I think it's really a culmination of a lot of different things, many good and some just by circumstance. And so we're very happy to see it finally trending down. We knew eventually we would hit that threshold. We just didn't know when that the spread would start to slow. One of the things that we look at to help answer the question is we look at the R-effective or R-not. It's a little dashboard we have on the website that shows how many people one person spreads to. And anytime that's above one, that shows that the infection rate is increasing. That, a couple of weeks ago, was our first indicator that it was slowing, that the spread was finally slowing. It dropped below one. I believe as of yesterday, we were .82, which is the lowest we've seen since the pandemic began, and we were tracking that number. So things people are doing are really paying off. They're not spreading it as much. It may be due to vaccinations being out there and a lot more immunity, because we had so many cases at one point in time, and we know that immunity lasts really strong, at least 90 days and maybe longer. So a combination of things. And what we should do going forward is we really need to get us to that red, where we really want to get to next as a goal. We really need to keep the physical distancing, the masking, avoid gatherings, avoid those high-risk scenarios where we could be exposed to the virus, and increase the spread once more. Our worry with the stay-at-home order being lifted is that people may relax too much. We want to make sure that they remember the precautions that we've talked about for months and months, and keep those in the forefront.
Okay. Thank you, Corwin. That helps answer my question. I know in a week and a half, we have the Super Bowl, and that's generally a time where many people tend to gather, and I think that message needs to be out there. I know it's very tempting to get together. And I guess the other question regards to the website. One of the things that I got a few calls from constituency was that the registration for vaccines was not in Spanish. So an option to click on it, so if they want to register Spanish, hopefully we can take a look at that. And I guess the other question is, when's the next round coming out for us to let the public know, or if they call us, at least they're calling our office regularly?
What I want to do quickly is just back up to the question of...
And before you leave this slide, I was just going to suggest for future...
Yep.
These numbers are like week-to-week timeframe. If you could show like a pie graph?
Absolutely.
You see going up, then going down, and where's the line we need to match?
Gotcha.
So we can understand how close we're getting to that red tier.
Yeah.
Just as an idea for...
Yeah, we'll definitely put that in. I don't know if between, oh, there you are, Andrew. You want to answer the Moderna question, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So when the Moderna issue first came about, it was over a Saturday afternoon, and then we were notified Sunday late evening that the state epidemiologist put a hold on the specific lot of Moderna. Overall, across the entire country, there's about 1.3 million doses that came from that lot. The state's allocation was 330,000, and our county's allocation of that was 16,100 doses. Our team immediately kind of gathered, reached out to, there was a few practices and physician clinics that had already received that vaccination. None had actually administered it yet, but had received it. They put a hold on that, and our team was able to regroup to put a hold on any future allocation of that 16,000 doses. We worked through our allocations, was able to savor or save most appointments that were scheduled for that use of those vaccines. And then shortly, within the next few days, CDPH came out and said that the vaccine was actually all clear. CDC, in partnership with Moderna and CDPH, did a pretty detailed investigation as to the adverse effects of those individuals that caused the pause, and came to the conclusion that it was not the Moderna itself, but more of a site-specific issue. And in fact, throughout the entire country, there was no adverse effects outside of that immediate event. So we did put that 16,000 back into circulation after we were given the okay from CDPH. No. It was just a pause.
Thank you so much, Andrew. If we could skip forward to the second to last slide. One... Keep going. There we go. Public communication outreach. As supervisors have mentioned, we are very aware that there's a lot of concerns and frustrations with the current vaccination portal. The state has notified us that the MyTurn, at MyTurn.ca.gov, has been released. This is a new vaccination registration portal. We have not been given a demo yet. I believe our team is scheduled to receive that from the state sometime this week.
So the same people that developed the EDD that's cost taxpayers $11 billion of fake stuff that we're relying on right now?
I believe so, Chairman. So we are hopeful that some of those items are being addressed here. We will keep your offices updated, because, again, our Joint Information Center has received an all-time high of over 2,000 calls, many of them probably related to the calls your offices receive with the same frustration of having to click through the entire system to find out that your appointment date is not available. So what we've done on our website is we've added a critical update banner. I want to thank you for feedback from your offices. We plan to put on that critical update banner if all the appointments are booked, and then there's none available. We'll have that information there. We also have created a 65-plus notification signup, and as we move through the age process, we can include every single age category that you can, if there's no appointments available, you can enter your information, and then an email will be sent out to you, a notification will be sent out to you, letting you know when new information arrives. We're also going to be working with our COVID vaccination team to provide your offices more real-time information. Hopefully, several days' notice when we're about to release a new tier, the amount of doses that we have available, if there are appointments still available or not, and then once appointments booked, notify your offices that appointments are booked to better help you with constituent services, as well as we'll keep our Joint Information Center apprised of that information, so that we can have real-time communication with folks that are calling in. We talked about the second dose appointments, the changes, we're going to start making them simultaneously. To get through the second dose appointments, we have established Royal Valley High School in San Bernardino. It's opening this Thursday, and for the first several days, they'll be dedicated to just working through all the second appointments that haven't been able to be realized yet, and the team will make those a priority, and they've already begun notifying folks and getting the word out.
So this, I understand, they're going to be reaching out, because going forward, at a certain point, when you sign up, you'll get both your dates. But for those who already got their first shot and are frustrated trying to figure out how to schedule their second one, we're going to be contacting all of them directly?
I believe the answer, yes, the answer is yes. The team is nodding emphatically. Just wanted to make sure I got the nod, but yes. I don't want to make sure that the public understands that they will be notified. I believe we've already outreach to over 400, and every day going forward, there's going to be continued outreach to those folks, making sure that we connect them. And it's not just a one-time only, there will be multiple times for them to come out and make that connection. Also, again, the Joint Information Center has expanded. As I mentioned, they've received a record amount of calls. We're adding to the Joint Information Center the ability for us to have folks that are bilingual, not only to answer the calls, but to help people with appointments. For those that are having a problem navigating technology, we're going to have that available. We are starting this week implementing after-hours for the Joint Information Center. They'll be having their operations till 8:00 in the evening. Obviously, a lot of folks are working, and so they may not have been available to call during the traditional kind of nine or eight to five, and so they're going to be available after-hours. And we're also looking at some Saturday timeframe for a small block, in case people are having issues over the weekend, they can have that ability. In addition, we've implemented 13 stakeholder groups. These are industry-focused stakeholder groups, where we're getting out every, I think it's a rotation, every two weeks, they're meeting new information on things related to the vaccination front, so that they could help us expand that information out to their stakeholders and others that they know. We believe that's going to be really important as we look at how do we continue to reach just beyond the county message. And then there's a communication strategy and advertising campaign that is going to be before your approval today, that'll really allow us to get beyond just the methods that we've been using currently, into a lot of different mediums of advertising, radio, television, banners, billboards, also doing it bilingual, working with trusted, some of the trusted communicators that you've identified, to make sure that we're also doing some kind of the non-conventional communication to local churches, to identified groups that may have been underrepresented in normal communication strategies. We're going to be working to get the word out and using some of the funding that is approved to make sure that we accomplish that as well. And we look forward to continued input from your offices.
Chairman? Just real quick, you might want to add to that group, and kind of just to piggyback on what Colonel Cook said, is I know in that group, you might want to just specifically reach out to many of our senior housing centers, which has a large amount, so hopefully we can keep that in mind as we're trying to reach out to folks that may not have the technology, but specifically to senior centers.
It's a great, great point, Supervisor. We'll make sure that they're part of the overview of how we outreach.
And then I just want to jump on the volunteer portal that you set up, which is awesome, because we have all, we've been having not only individuals, but more importantly, groups like IHP, and I've heard of a couple of my fire districts that are trained, but they won't be the ones putting shots in the arms, but they'll be the ones helping fill out forms and help, you know, directing parking, or whatever the case may be. So that volunteer portal will allow people who want to get involved to help with this vaccination out, which allows us to be a force multiplier in getting multiple sites, dealing with the largest geographical county in the United States. We can't, we talked about not having a singular site like some other neighboring counties. I've get a lot of calls in that, "Oh, where's your super center?" And we will have larger centers, but they're going to be spread throughout the county, so you don't have to drive three hours one direction, wait in line for three hours, then figure out how to get yourself home. We're trying to make it more of a regional approach of the small, you know, our partners and medical facilities, our mediums, which is our public health sites and our hospitals, and then the larger ones that will be coming, which I think is on the next slide. But just to allow people know that if you do want to help, if you want to get involved, there's now that portal that's on our website to allow groups of people. Maybe it's your Rotary group or Quanis group that says, "Hey, I'm a volunteer one day a month to help with one of those sites." We'll try to figure out where the manpower are to allow us to have more sites and to allow us to multiply our efforts throughout the county, so it makes it less of a burden for those residents to come out.
Thank you for covering that. I might have missed that, and I know that the team has worked hard to get that up. And again, feedback from your offices has been very valuable. I want to give kudos to Human Resources and all the work that they're doing to set that up and identify how we can, again, Chairman, do force multiplication in this environment, so that we're working with everyone to help solve and provide the solutions. We go to the next slide. Some things that are coming up. The medical points of dispensing sites to provide free vaccinations for most vulnerable communities. The team is at work with those. The first one, as mentioned, will handle the second doses, will be up this week, others will follow. Thank you for feedback, and we continue to move forward with those. Super vaccination sites, as you mentioned, Chairman, we're not going to go with a model of just having one, we're too large to do that. So we imagine sites rotating in the various super... So we imagine sites rotating in the various supervisory districts so that we give opportunities for everyone to have an opportunity maybe to come out and get it initiated and get it done at one of those large sites. And then the mobile vaccination clinics. There you see one of the units that's being tooled up and ready to go. And we are working with the different routes right now. We will bring those back to report so that we'll make sure that we're hitting the communities that need to have that level of support during this time because of the remoteness and the geography.
Leonard or Andrew, one of the things that we really don't have that crystal ball, but we have two approved vaccinations so far. We hope we're going to have another two more coming up. But the rate we're going is going to take a long time to get to everybody who wants a shot. So do you have that crystal ball and see what kind of acceleration of getting the supply? Have we got any intelligence in supply more than a week out or two weeks out? Do you see us, because in no sense have a super site unless you have the vaccinations to get out? So what timeframe are we looking at? And piggyback on that, like if you take that class of citizens over 65 and over, what kind of universe we're talking about, what kind of raw numbers are we looking at to get through that? And that kind of gives us a little bit indication of, you know, for our calls coming into our office, hey, if you're 61, it's probably going to be, you know, whatever time, but that kind of prediction.
Sure. I'll let, I don't have a crystal ball, but I have an Andrew Goldfrack and the team thinks of him as our crystal ball sometimes. So he'll comment on what's coming down the pike on the vaccination front. Using census data, the group has identified possibly about 400,000 eligible folks in the 65-plus category in our county. We'll be breaking that down as we give you updates when we're about to release a new tier. What the population, now that it's age-based, it's going to be a lot easier. When it was vocationally based, it was a little bit more of gathering information because we can use the census data for that. But if you think about that many folks and, you know, maybe 60% of them wanting to get vaccinated, you can start to see the magnitude of what we need and the numbers of vaccinations we're getting. I'll let Andrew speak to some of the development that's out there about the timing of other vaccinations by other pharmaceutical companies, et cetera.
All right. Thank you very much, Leonard, and I appreciate the confidence on the crystal ball. So the good news is, as you mentioned, Chairman, there are still two other pharmaceuticals that are still coming to play. It looks like Johnson &amp; Johnson is going to be the next to apply for their EUA. We're being told likely this month. However, I don't know the specific dates yet as to when they're going to apply. The great thing with the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine over our current with Pfizer and Moderna is it is a single-shot vaccine and doesn't require the two shots. So hopefully, once that comes through EUA, we'll now have three pharmaceuticals to market. AstraZeneca is, will be then the fourth to market. And I do not have, unfortunately, a timeframe as to when that's happening. We have been told that Moderna is ramping up their production and we could be seeing, at least from the state perspective, a 30% or so bump in Moderna coming to the state, which would therefore in turn equal more doses of Moderna to the county. I don't know what that exact number, what that would look like as the allocations to each county are still, unfortunately, week over week. So we find out usually on mid, you know, early to mid-week what the following week will be. So, but we are expecting to see an increase in Moderna based off of that 30% bump to the state as well as hopefully Johnson &amp; Johnson coming onboard soon.
And we all want to get more going out there all the time. And the one last thing for maybe Corwin and team to work on, again, a lot of questions after you get that second shot. So it's a small universe right now in the county, but as they get there, are they still potential carriers? You know, how long is it going to last? You know, how long is your, you know, defense against the coronavirus going to last? Those type of questions, which I don't expect to get all the answers today, but I'm hoping that we have a question answers on our website for those who get their second shot to say, okay, you still need to wear your mask. You still need to do this or that. You still could be a carrier if that's the science at this point. You may not feel it, but now you're one of those people that may carry it. So you still need to take some precautions. And then also at some point in the future, maybe recommendations to the board. Okay, is this going to be an annual thing that we need to gear up and have infrastructure for? What kind of long-term planning? We were caught, you know, without knowing this coming, but now since it's here, what are six months, a year, 18 months, you know, do we need to start looking forward to going down the pike? You know, those are just things that we need to spend our time and maybe start planning for resources or personnel or equipment or whatever that case may be. As we work with our partners now, that will go for so long because they're not getting reimbursed for putting a shot in someone's arm. You know, how long is that going to, before their charity runs out and I don't want to do this anymore? You know, and so we need to think about the infrastructure to keep on this battle against this virus. Short-term, long-term, I don't know. But that's some of the questions I'd like to see in our future presentation is what we need to do with it. And one last thing before I let you finish, I'm sorry, Leonard. I noticed that I got a article this morning that, we talked about this a couple of weeks ago, about potentially some kind of digital format was saying you got the shot. LA County has now come out with that. I don't know. It's their own thing. I know Orange County has their own appointment system. I'm thankful the state's come out with something, but I'm not the most, I guess, convinced that is the best and brightest thing out there because state's known to not be the best at everything. And can we look into what some of the other counties are doing? You know, if you lose that little card, maybe this digital thing you put on your phone is a good thing. You know, maybe a different reservation system. And I'm glad to hear that those who go through all that time to fill out their forms now will at least say, your forms have been submitted. We're full right now, but we'll give you the email when you can schedule the next appointment and kind of get them in order as people are checking in online. And the software can compute those are age-specific or whatever the case may be. But, so it's great progress, but hopefully we get some of those things going forward.
Mr. Chairman, one last issue. And the VA and the military installations, do they have their own population that they, I know the Vons and all the other places, but that's a large, at least in my area, that's a large population. And obviously, most of them or a lot of them are in the elderly group. Do you coordinate with them at all in terms of, you know, trying to target those, that population? Because I haven't heard much. I haven't, I'll be honest with you, I haven't talked to the VA since I left my previous job.
You know, we have reached out to the VA. They do get their own allocation from, it's the federal government, correct?
Correct. So I've been in contact with our military bases as well as the VA as late as actually this morning. And I spoke with the PIO, or Public Information Officer for Fort Irwin this morning. They have a revised and their own tier structure and they are vaccinating directly through the federal allocation from the Department of Defense for not only their membership, but their beneficiaries and families.
And they would vaccinate the service member as well as the dependents?
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
And same thing with the VA or?
Yes. Well, the VA, as long as they're on the VA benefits.
Yeah, I know, different, but it's a large group and I was just, I'm glad you're coordinating on that.
And actually, on our website, we have a link that will tie directly to the VA vaccination page.
Good, good, good.
That way, if you are a member that does have the TRICARE or VA benefits and on our website, it goes directly to them.
Great. Thank you.
And I know some of the National Guardsmen are getting vaccinations because my son was in one of those first groups. They were on deployment last week for the inauguration, security force, and they started giving those troops at Los Al. So I think they're starting to finally get those through their different ranks.
Not vaccination-related. Leonard, could you or someone clarify the difference between the stay-at-home order being lifted and the no gathering order?
Yeah, I'd like to call back up Corwin and he can kind of discuss some of the components of now what's in the purple tier and how that applies. And I appreciate the clarification because it's probably good for the public to understand.
Thank you. So, yeah, the no gathering went to up to three households. So that's where we started before the regional stay-at-home order went into effect and we're back there again. So that's the limitation that we're currently under.
And then if we go to the last slide, again, as Corwin mentioned, just a reminder to continue to wash our hands, cover our face, maintain the physical distancing and stay home if you're sick. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Leonard. Any more questions, staff? We do have a couple of requests to speak on this item. Thank you all being patient. A lot of the information, but obviously it's changing. So I think it's important to get out to our residents. First one is Philip Figgus. Philip, then Pamela Jackson, right after that. So is Philip around?
Good morning. We can call the beginning of the board's new year with the "Nothing We Can Do" session. Heard the reporting of Ron Blitzer of Fox News. We have received that the American people have elected a person such as this to tell us that we can, there's nothing we can do. So everything that we've been doing here over the months, coming to you, presenting facts that we find that you don't have, you haven't looked into or if you have, you haven't discussed them here. We're finding this out. There's a lot of things underneath that we don't know. So we have people that have come here and called it a scandemic. We've had people in the government level, high level dictating to us what we don't, we're not supposed to be doing things that are part of our constitutional rights. Simple things. The heavy-handed, top-down abuse of power to shut down the people and their ability to strive, to survive and even to thrive has been eliminated for self-interest. And I've said over and over and over, I've quoted it over and over, "For the love of money is the root of all evil." Additionally, more mandated objectives of these abuses such as state-dictated and controlled salaries. You don't have any thoughts about the people that have businesses, small businesses? You're destroying them. They can't compete with government taxpayer money. They can't deal with it. In other words, these are state mandates and they aren't market-driven. And I make that point. Layoffs are no longer from lack of work, but self-initiated with government support. This government is tinkering with what has been considered what is normal and natural, what some people call regular. And that's what we want to get back to, I think. But I've heard a lot of stuff just in this opening moments. And I wonder, where did you get that information? Did that come from government sources? Is government sources the only place that we get things? There's nothing we can do to change the trajectory of the pandemic in the next several months. That's what was said. Our question then to the Board of Supervisors is why do we continue to seek state information?
Thank you for your comments. Pamela Jackson, please. And then at that, Kristi Burchett. Ms. Jackson.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for this opportunity to share with you the purpose of COVID mandates, taken from an article by Stephen Barwick. There are four distinct interrelated orders being mandated globally by government. One, ritual handwashing. Two, ritual mask-wearing. Three, ritual social distancing. Four, ritual lockdowns and stay-at-home. Let us examine why. Ritual handwashing is the occultic ritualistic symbol of rejection. Symbolically, you wash away your old position or master in his prescribed ways in anticipation of your new master and his ways. Ritual mask-wearing, the wearing of the mask over one's mouth is a token of submission, a gesture of your willingness to be subject to others who are not your usual sovereign. The wearing of the mask is simply part of the initiation ritual used to visually and psychologically signal your consent to this new arrangement. By wearing the mask, you're signaling your consent to accept a new and very different position in a new global order. Ritual social distancing, the magical six feet apart, is the part of the initiation ritual that separates us from human interaction and engagement. It is impossible to escape millions of viruses in every breath of air we take. Somewhere between 1.6 million to 40 million viruses are in every cubic meter of air we pass through. Ritual lockdowns and social isolation. There are basically four stages to an isolation ritual. Stage one, isolation for purification. Stage two, surrender to the new normal, leading the initiate to believe he's being well-taken care of by his new overlords or government. Stage three, sacrifice, your dignity, your sovereign independence, your voice, your individual power on this earth. Stage four, submission, mandatory vaccines, social tracing, testing. It's the willing acceptance of new rules for a new order. A recent study of New York-area hospitals show that 66% of COVID hospitalizations were people who followed the rituals. The purpose of the mandates then is enslavement. My allegiance is to the lordship of Jesus Christ who calls his believers and all humanity to liberty and not to bondage. According to the DOJ Attorney General.
That's time.
Thank you very much. Kristi Burchett, and then Norma Gadeness.
I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for directing the Public Information Officer to email answers to the questions I and others have submitted, both in writing as well as in public comment. One of the answers from the list that stood out was the question of what cycle threshold is used on PCR tests. These were Folgen genetics was less than 40, and we need to get an exact number here on that. PerkinElmer 40 to 42, Quest 40, LabCorp 38. A reminder of information I have presented prior. Our color tier system in the state is based on COVID tests with our PCR tests. I have come before this board and spoken on PCR tests, given the board's articles and information, the science on PCR tests, explaining the cycle threshold that PCR tests are conducted in terms of high-cycle threshold being used for PCR tests and subsequently COVID cases. In July 2020, as a reminder, Dr. Fauci said if you get a cycle threshold of 35 or more, the chances of it being replication competent are miniscule. He goes on to say you almost never culture a virus from a 37-cycle threshold. And then, so you got to say if someone comes in with 37, 38, even 36, you got to say it's just dead nucleotides, period. The document put out by the CDC on the FDA website, again, in July of 2020, stated the cycle threshold growth curves cross the threshold line with 40 cycles. Therefore, the majority of labs, as we've just seen, conduct the PCR test to a cycle threshold of 40. Even The WHO is now admitting, as of January 13, 2021, that where test results do not correspond with the clinical presentation, a new specimen should be taken and retested using the same or different NET technology. And most PCR assays are indicated as an aid for diagnosis, yet they're being used primarily, the primary tool by labs as a diagnostic test. I have said it before and I will say it again. If this Board of Supervisors is serious about a viable lawsuit against the governor and CDPH, here it is, PCR tests. Our positivity rates as of today, as you reported, in this county is 59.7 per 100,000. When we have to be at seven or below per 100,000 to get our county into the red tier. The only way we get out of this mess is linked to the PCR test, and the way it is being read now is fraudulent. You all know it, and you've known it. The time is now to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Norma Godinez.
Hello. My name is Norma Godinez. I live in Altaloma. In December, Newsom announced if ICU units, if the ICU capacity fell below 15, he would issue another stay-at-home order, which he did. As of January 12th, the Greater Sacramento Region lockdown order was lifted, even though their ICU capacity was at 9%. Southern California has been at 0% capacity every week now, and miraculously, we're at 14.4% and projected to be at 30% in four weeks. How is that? How can Newsom make such a prediction? Even President Biden has stated that there is nothing we can do to change the trajectory of the pandemic in the next couple of months. Take LA, for example. December 3rd, when the lockdowns were instated, hospitalizations were at 2,572. As of yesterday, they are at 6,697. That is an increase. Newsom is not following the ICU tier now. Now we're back to the color tier. He says he is following science. Well, let's see the science. When asked, Newsom said he would not release ICU data because it would confuse the public. Democrat Assemblywoman Deborah Friedman from Glendale said she had, that said they hadn't not been kept, they had been kept out of the loop on changing rules that Newsom's administration had used to impose COVID restrictions. San Bernardino County spokesperson David Werke said officials had, that officials here aren't aware of the models the state is using, and if they do exist, they would find them helpful. What that says to me is that Mr. Werke does not believe the state has the data to back up the claim to keep California closed. Mr. Hagman, you have stated on several times that you have reached out to the state, and they have not responded. If this is so, why is the county continuing to follow these guidelines? This one-size-fits-all does not work. Returning to the purple tier does not work, does not help restaurants like Mountain Top Cafe off the 138. They do not have a patio, and the owner has laid off all of her employees. She has lost 70% profit since she can only do takeout. The Grizzly Cafe in Wrightwood has outdoor dining, but I doubt anyone would want to dine in a foot of snow. We are going on 10 months now, and it is very obviously, it's very obviously obvious that the masks, social distancing, and the stay-at-home orders have done nothing to slow the spread. About 90% of the residents were masked. I am at a farmer's market every Saturday, and my daughter and I are the only ones without a mask. No one can say that 10% that do not wear masks are the problem. Alice Bergensen said it best. Virus is going to virus, just as the flu, we will build herd immunity. Small businesses have just as much right to fully open their businesses as Target, Home Depot, Costco, et cetera. Just as these businesses claim to be private businesses and run them as they choose, so do small businesses. Board of Supervisors, now that we all know-
That's time.
-Newsom has been lying to us, what are you going to do about it?
Thank you for your comments. That's all I have requests to speak at this time. We're going to move over to the Consent Counters Calendar, items 2 through 71.
Mr. Chair, I do have a few changes to-
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. The following are the changes I have for today's agenda. Item number three is revised to read, "Approve the appointment of Shannon Shannon to Seat 1 on the Workforce Development Board for the remaining two-year term, expiring December 31, 2022." And item number 17 is being revised to read as follows. "authorize the Chairman of the Board to execute the attached letter to the .gov program, part of the U.S. General Services Administration, which would delegate authority over this SB County ATC.gov or ATCSBCounty.gov, second-level domain named to the County of San Bernardino for an annual $4,000, or $400 domain fee." Those are all the changes I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any board member like to remove an item from the set?
Number 58 for comment, please.
58? Anybody else? We have any requests to speak on these items?
No, we do not.
Thank you. So we need to entertain a motion. And second, do you want a presentation on 58 or just a comment? Okay. So items 2 through 71, minus 58, we'll need a motion.
Moved.
Got a motion by Supervisor Baca.
Second.
Vice Chair Rao. We're all here. So all those in favor? Aye. Thank you. We'll move on to item number 58. And I'm not sure who's presenting that. Captain, you coming down? Sorry. Yeah, come on down. Sorry. Had to look it up.
Good morning, Chairman, Order Supervisors, Captain Aides with the Bureau of Administration for the Sheriff's Department. Item 58 relates to the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration Domestic Eradication and Suppression Program related to illicit marijuana. And today, I brought with me Lieutenant Mark Brock, who has some detailed information as to how that money is spent. If you have any information you'd like to know about the grant, I can provide that as well. But I'll leave it to Lieutenant Brock to give the information on how that money is allocated and spent.
Thank you, Captain Aides. Good morning, Board. The Drug Enforcement Agency administers this grant of $200,000. It comes to the county annually. We've had the grant for approximately 14 years. It's strictly to deal with the marijuana cultivations that are handled illegally in our county. And we support that money with the Marijuana Enforcement Team that is assigned to our Gangs Narcotics Division. I oversee that team. And the main purpose is to attack the illegal outdoor cultivations, indoor cultivations, any type of THC extraction labs. The extraction labs that we deal with in the county are a little bit different, that they require the marijuana team as well as our lab response team. The $200,000, about 70% of it goes to overtime. It does not pay for any salaries or benefits. 30% of it goes towards the equipment that the team needs. We expend that money in about six months. The team is a six-person team, and they do about, just off of this grant, anywhere about 300 search warrants a year annually. This money was not used for our recent Operation Homegrown that was already expended prior to us implementing that program.
Thank you. I wanted to call attention to this because we have a tremendous issue in our unincorporated areas of the desert that I am very thankful for your help and your assistance with the task force. And I wanted to bring a little light to my peers for their knowledge because it's continuing to get worse, although the recent eradication has been very successful. How many ballpark illegal cultivation grows would you say that we have had at the height of that time period? Just kind of known, whether they were eradicated or not, illegal grows?
20, on average annually, we have about 300 to 400 cultivations that the team handles. With the implementation of Operation Homegrown, which added 21 personnel from the Sheriff's Department, Sheriff McMahon and the Office of the Sheriff have a quality-of-life issue with marijuana cultivation. So we implemented an additional five teams that handled the cultivation during that four-month program. We served 300 search warrants and made 303 arrests. The seizure of 30,000 pounds of marijuana was taken. The team annually seizes 10,000 pounds of marijuana. So this four-month program, they seized three times that amount.
It is probably the biggest problem that I have in the Third District at the current time. It is impacting our quality of life, homeownership, sales, water quality, all different kinds of issues. And so I really want to commend the entire task force and the effort, and Sheriff McMahon's willingness to come out and partner with our communities and our law enforcement. Highway Patrol, we have illegal water trucks, carriers, haulers. It's just really changed the landscape for those of us that call that area home. And so thank you very much for your efforts on all of that. And I just wanted to know, because I'm sure at some point we'll be asking for more money for this, to know that we do partner and seek the grants from outside partner agencies, but that it probably will take a little bit more effort from us as a board. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, ma'am. And we truly appreciate the support from the board on that operation. The men and women that were working were very happy with how it went. We think we made an impact. Up, your constituents reached out via email to the sheriff. They're very happy with the service they got. The team's not stopping. We're just doing it with less people. You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any public comments on this item? Okay, we entertain a motion.
Second.
We got a motion by Supervisor Baca, Vice Chair Rao. Seconds. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Now we're going to move on to public comment. Pamela Jackson's up first, then Douglas Hauser.
Hello again, and thank you for allowing me to speak on the sheriff's authority. If you are public servants, do not know the law, you govern a lawless county. If you do not uphold the law, you are careless servants. The nature of unrestrained government servants is to seize power and control over the people. Therefore, God gave laws to protect us and expects enforcement of those laws. The office of our sheriff is to enforce the law and the constitutional statutes that prevent lawless public servants from injuring the people. It is clear that the governor is lawless, are you. The governor has a duty to arrest lawless judges, supervisors, and health officers. He does not require the county prosecutor for indictments. He has grand jury access, and he has the authority to perform criminal investigations. For crime to exist requires, one, that there must be an injured party, we the people. Two, that there must be a remedy for the injured, we the people. We continue to be injured physically, mentally, spiritually, and economically. By law, Title II Civil and Human Rights Act, all citizens' patronage into places of public accommodation should be without harassment and intimidation. According to Title III of the U.S. Civil Rights Act 36.208, any public accommodation denying our right to be in their business must have a court restraining order with a doctor's medical statement and proof stating that we pose a direct threat to that business and that we must be quarantined. The Fourth Amendment and California Civil Code, Section 51.7A, protects our persons and dignity and should be defended by the sheriff. No one is legally bound to obey an unconstitutional law, and no courts are bound to enforce it. Sheriff, will you uphold your oath and defend we the people from intrusive government? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next one is Douglas Hauser. After that, floor, Avrilo.
Good morning and Happy New Year to the board and to everybody here. Fair and honest elections are absolutely essential to maintain our constitutional republic. The 2020 presidential election was grievously marked by widespread voting irregularities in several battleground states and probably here in California. Many of these stem from the use of statewide mail-in ballots. The California Election Integrity Project has documented that numerous non-citizens, ineligible felons, dead people, ghost voters, and non-residents, people who've moved out of California, received mail-in ballots. Numerous voters received more than one ballot. In my own personal experience, I know of a candidate for office who received at her home a mail-in ballot for a person who does not exist, composed of a garbled combination of the names of several people. And I'm sure that's not the only case. In neighboring Nevada, testimony before Congress revealed 40,000 people who voted more than once, 20,000 that had left the state, and 10,000 deceased people who had voted. I never heard of that testimony being debunked, and I'm sure those problems are not unique to Nevada. The 2005 Carter Baker Commission on Federal Election Reform stated that, quote, "Absentee ballots remain the largest source of potential fraud," unquote, because they can be intercepted and completed by someone who is not the intended voter. There were also numerous documented problems with the Dominion Voting System's tabulators, in which votes were switched by so-called bulk adjudication. Ballots were run through the tabulator multiple times, and large volumes of votes are uploaded for a candidate with flash drives. It was reported that during a test of Dominion in Georgia, a unanimous block of voters was fed to that system, which corrected it to 17% for the other candidate. I've never heard that report debunked either. In San Bernardino County, 6.7% of all 2020 voters had at least one of their ballot cards adjudicated, according to the San Bernardino County Register of Voters. That is far too many. As those of you who know me know, I could go on and on on this subject, but I won't. San Bernardino County and the entire state of California must abandon the Dominion Voting System, eliminate mail-in ballots except for true absentee voters, require photo ID to vote, and proof of citizenship for voter registration. In addition, the vigorous prosecution of any and all cases of voter fraud would have an extremely positive effect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your, please keep your comments down. Floor, Avrilo, I'm sorry. Then Kristi Sibola Burchett. Floor? Avrilo? Going once? Going twice? Okay, Kristi Sibola Burchett.
She's out in the room. Tell them they're getting Kristi.
Good morning again, Kristi.
Good morning. I'm here to speak a little bit about health. Through Educate, Advocate, which serves families who have special needs children and adults, we have helped many families provide advice and things like that. They've been dealing with discrimination in the hospitals, not allowing a support person to be there with them, something you should be aware of with the hospitals in the area. And we have on our website a section called Tips to Boost the Immune System. We've had it there since March 13th, since this all started. Because it was something lacking, there was not any information other than, at the time, washing your hands and social distancing. That was all public health was providing to, to people. And there's other things beyond that. You know, God gave us an immune system that actually helps to heal us and promote our health. And so we have a list of foods you could eat, and you know, tips about drinking water and making sure you have the Wi-Fi off at night, make sure you get sleep, you know, common things that people should know about. We have prophylaxis, which is to guard, to watch a protocol for treatment for COVID, which anybody could be on and should be on. We have pre-hospital treatment on there as well. We should be giving prophylaxis treatment to all assistive living, or at least offering it to them, nursing home patients that want it, all teachers that want it to get them back in the classroom. We should be offering it to anybody and everybody who wants to instead of serving them a daily dose of nonstop fear on the news. It's a crime against humanity that there are treatments, there are therapeutics that work. These are not being offered as a first line of defense. Where are the billboards, the emails, the radio announcements, the television ads for therapeutics? All I have seen in the last 10 months are billboards of stay home, stay safe, wear a mask, stay six feet apart, wash your hands. Why isn't the CDC, our federal, our state, our county public health offering viable solutions to help health? People should feel informed and feel empowered to take control of their own health. And with the power of our God-given and wonderfully-created immune system, where are the messages of go outside, take a walk, take vitamin C, drink a lot of water? You know? And now they're recommending, by the way, I don't think all of you are compliant, in compliance, they're recommending two face masks. Dr. Fauci said that yesterday. One of the other questions we asked about treatments to the Public Information Officer that got back to us, they didn't have on there, on the list, hydroxychloroquine was not on the list, which is, that's just awful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Philip Figgus, then Ron Sellers. Philip Figgus, then Ron Sellers.
I don't want to bring anything here that I don't believe is authoritative, so I'll start this little part off with coming from behind what I said before, that vanity of vanities, says the preacher, vanity of vanities, all is vanity. What advantage does man have in all his work, which he does under the sun? A generation goes and a generation comes, but the earth remains forever. Also, the sun rises and the sun sets, and hastens to its place, it rises there again, blowing toward the south, then turning toward the north. The wind continues swirling around and along on its circular courses, the wind returns again. All the rivers flow into the sea, yet the sea is not full. To the place where the rivers flow, there they flow again. All things are wearisome. Man is not able to tell it. The eye is not satisfied with the scene, nor is the ear filled with hearing. That which has been is that which will be, and that which has been done is that which will be done. So there is nothing new under the sun. Is there anything of which one might say, see this, it is new? Already it has existed for ages which were before us. There is no remembrance of the earlier things, and also of the later things that will occur. There will be for them no remembrance among those who will come later still. That is a note for all the things that we talk about. One of our questions to this board time and again has been, why do you have only gone to the state when the state is in effect, giving us information that is unverifiable, unquestioned, and protected through censorship of other sources that counter it? This is leading the people to fear and confusion, and the Lord is not the author of confusion. After presenting the we-can-do-nothing pessimistic view of the newly-installed administration at the federal level in previous comments, and now knowing the California Communist Party that is in the control of the government has suggested that the California model of Wuhan control and compliance be dictated to the people over this past year should be implemented at the federal level. In other words, we got a California-controlled national perspective of this Wuhan plandemic. Now, there's information available for you that started in 1998. This COVID is patented. It's patented by Fauci and his friends.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Ron Sellers.
Ron Sellers in Highland. There's a lot of concern regarding our health and so forth. We find a lot of people are trying to pretend they care about our health. Yet the ones I have talked to, or at least heard about as well, they seem to be the same people who concern themselves with our COVID-19, and yet at the same time support baby killing. Planned Parenthood, or Planned Non-Parenthood, was started by Margaret Stanger. She apparently was a white supremacist because it's made to tone down the population of blacks. Not too long ago, single-digit years, I heard Hillary Clinton say that Margaret Stanger was one of her heroes. She re-spoke, I heard it then twice. So therefore, would that make her a white supremacist too? And yet, it seems like the people who talk about white supremacists, they themselves are more that way than the ones they're talking, than the people they are talking to, unfortunately. We have Dominion here, come here some time ago, software program from out of the country. And I'd like to know who hired them? Who made money on the deal here in the United States? How many government people who made money on this thing? I think Mr. Cook would probably have closer to that answer than many people, I would think, since he's been in the federal government level for eight years, almost. And then we have people talk about the Great Reset. The Great Reset from what? They're trying to reset us back to communism or one world government? And speaking of one world government, the people who are involved in that, how do they make their individual money? You've got WHO, CFR, United Nations, where do they get the money from? They seem to be quite well off financially and very powerful. And at the same time, they seem to be going after the, I don't say they seem to be, they already are, going after the Constitution of the United States, which is the one country in the world that people want to come to because they see the wonderful freedoms that are afforded here. They're finding disappointment, however, when they come here to find out, what are we doing? What's going on here is not what we heard about. We need more like an Ellis Island, which was one way to have.
That's time.
And another, one more thing here.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. We're going to move on.
Is there any way to?
Kathleen Brennan. Then after Kathleen is Chris Cordova.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I'm here on behalf of Kathleen Brennan. She had a prior meeting that she had to go to. So I'm just going to read her statement for you. My name is Kathleen Brennan. I am a current proud county employee and the president of Teamsters Local 1932. I am honored to be here to speak on behalf of my amazing brothers and sisters that work at Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. It didn't take a pandemic for me to know that hospital workers are undervalued and underappreciated across the board. I've always known and felt that because I knew, no, I could never do the jobs that they do, no amount of training can help someone like me who does not have a calling into the medical field, and that's a fact. I get anxiety just being in a hospital. Before the pandemic, I know that hospital workers felt underappreciated, and this pandemic has intensified this feeling. I can't even imagine the toll it's taken on their morale, yet they somehow soldier on each and every day. Many of them, dedicated women, men and women, who you will hear from next, have shared with me some of their stories about not having a weekend off with their families since May, about holding the hands of countless people while they take their last breath, and most painful of all the ones that have caught COVID and not recovered, and those that brought COVID home to a parent and then lost that parent to the disease. The Heroes Act would have provided the resources needed to help sustain their motivation and lift their spirits and potentially, therefore, save more lives. I have no doubt the new administration in DC will come through. Until then, I am asking that this county act boldly and be the example for everyone else in this country, and find a way to support these workers and show them that they are not expendable, and they are absolutely essential and valued, but most importantly, that we have their backs. Thank you.
Chris Cordova. And then Jeremy Lopez.
Hello and thank you. To the County of San Bernardino Board of Supervisors, the Security Department of Arrowhead Regional Medical Center respectfully seek to frontline workers' compensation and retention incentives granted to other departments. We formally request to be considered and acknowledged as a department eligible for this compensation retention incentive. The grounds of the petition as follows. Security staff members monitor all entrances of Arrowhead Regional Medical Center, Woodpine offices, and off-site medical clinics. Since April 1st, 2020, security staff have had 59,265 hours of possible COVID-19 exposure when conducting safety screens of all guests, customers, and patients of these facilities. Security staff has not been granted proper protection equipment to shield them from the airborne pathogens, which is expected spread of COVID-19. Currently, we do not qualify as a department to receive simple masks. Security staff has to be directed to wear a personal cloth mask. The risk of exposure and contraction of the virus is high within the security department. Thirty-one percent of the department has contracted the virus. Arrowhead Regional Medical Center Administration continues to expect the security department to provide all services and minimal protection. Since April 1st, 2020, the security staff has monitored and watched COVID-19 positive 5150 patients for 444 hours. So security staff must transport these COVID-19 positive 5150 patients to the nursing tower and behavioral health department, at times being in enclosed vehicle in close proximity with the patient. So security staff who are assigned to the behavioral health department are summoned to stand by as medical staff conduct COVID-19 testing of potential patients. Medical staff utilize full PPEs and face shields while conducting these screenings. Security staff stand by only wearing a cloth mask. Once a patient has taken a COVID-19 test, they are granted access into the lobby. Security must sit in the lobby with a potential positive COVID-19 patient to monitor his or her safety. Even though we are experiencing this pandemic, our department duties have not changed. We are still responsible for the safety of the facility, staff, and patients. During these times, we encountered multiple instances where we had to go hands-on with COVID-19 positive patients who were attempting to elope or promote violence towards medical staff. These incidents take place inside a patient's room, in COVID-19 units. Security has to use physical MAB maneuvers to safely subdue the patient while wearing PPEs as the patients are spitting and breathing onto the security staff. Arrowhead Regional Medical Center Administration has placed extra assignments on the security staff, such as monitoring on-campus COVID-19 swabbing station, monitoring the alternative care site located in Lot 14, enforcing social distancing of staff, guests across the campus. Lastly, the security department has been tasked with the logistics of interior and exterior morgues. Security has to conduct body counts, operate ceiling lifts, rearrange bodies, and move them to the exterior morgues to accommodate the high volumes of deceased patients expired by COVID-19. The data and facts in this petition have been composed from the security department records. A reference that I would like to use from the classic novel Animal Farm.
That's time.
All frontline hero workers are equal, but some are more equal than others.
Thank you very much. Jeremy Lopez. And then Tom Templeton.
First of all, I'd just like to say thank you and a good morning. I work for the security department at ARM.C. I had a speech prepared, but I was asked to kind of share my story. I recently lost my wife in June of last year to COVID. And it's hard to tell the story because when you feel like you're responsible for somebody's death that you love, because you go to work every day and you want to provide for your family. It's hard, but we still go to work every day, you know? I didn't go to work for a few months, but when I was ready, I did. And all my coworkers and everybody at the hospital, we still go to work every day. You know, sometimes we don't have time to put a face mask on and put some gloves on because a patient comes in, you know, whether they've been like shot or stabbed in the streets and they're getting rushed in through the trauma center, or there's just a visitor coming through the lobby that gets upset because they can't go see a loved one. And then we have to go hands-on with somebody because, you know, they're a little upset and they feel like we don't have any compassion for them because of what's going on in their lives. But at some point, all of us have been affected by this. So I just hope you see how much the security department actually does for the hospital and for the people that work there, and the visitors and the patients that are there, you know? Because we are an important part of the hospital, and we love our jobs, and we're appreciative of the county and of our union because we know you guys are doing the right thing and we're moving in the right direction. But, you know, some of us still feel a little neglected, but for all the county employees that go to work every day, I'm thankful for them and I'm thankful for you guys. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you for your comments. Tom Templeton. Then Margarita Ogwin.
Hi, my name is Margarita Ogwin. I work in the.
I'm sorry, I was trying to get, is Tom not here?
Tommy's not here, he stepped out, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Margarita.
Hi, my name is Margarita Ogwin. I work at Arrowhead Emergency Department. It's my home, I've been there for 21 years. I continue to go to work, I continue to strive and be there probably for another 21 years. It's very disheartening to hear that everybody that works in the emergency department, from the nurses all the way down to anybody that works in there, is not treated, we don't feel like we're being treated equal. We've gotten chosen over by other titles, whether they're going to get this incentive pay or stipulus, however you want to word it, the rest of us have been shoved to the backside. It takes all of us from the ground up to make that department work. We've been added on duties, we've been added on areas of the ER that runs out into the parking lot, and from the doctors, the PAs, the nurses, everybody below them, we're there to support them and to help, and we're just as elbow deep. For all the unfortunate people that come in and they don't make it, it's an entire team to help save these lives. When everybody is gowned in masks and is in there, you can't tell what title is what. I think that when they're saying that it's San Bernardino Strong and the ARM.C ER team, when you're picking and choosing who deserves more than the next, that's not supporting that statement. That's not supporting or giving the feel that everybody is important there. There's a segregation, they've chosen by a title of somebody's name. I don't think that's appreciated, it doesn't make us feel appreciated. Again, this is my home, I've been here for 21 years. I'm not going anywhere. I love my job, I come every day. Nobody has to force me or pick me up or call me and say, come to work. I come to work, I put my big girl shoes on, and I do what I need to do. And that goes for all ancillary and everybody, like I said, that walks into that emergency department, which is a huge porthole for people to come in. We don't have the time, or do we ever have the choice to be able to gown up and do the things when it's a life-saving measure? Lives come first. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Judy Johnson, and then Brandy Jimenez.
Hello, my name is Judy Johnson. I'm a hospital unit assistant. I work at Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. I'm here basically for the same thing she was just discussing. There is a group of us, we're a very small group of hospital unit assistants, but we are at the hub, the center of every medical surgical unit, ICU unit, COVID unit. We are at the heartbeat of that unit. We do a lot of things that are a part of a team, and we have been left out of that incentive, too. We've been left out of the team. We've been left out of the team. But when we're there, we have a great group of people that we work with. All my nurses. I have a great fabulous team. And I will guarantee you they'll say the same thing back to me. But I do things throughout the day that also put me at risk. I have patients with psychological problems that are COVID-positive that are coming out and approaching me at the front desk. I have family members coming in, more family members than we had come in in the beginning. And now that we're in a surge, there's even more people being allowed in. I have people approaching me there. I'm the one that handles all the phone calls of those desperate family members that can't get in to see their family. I am there to run supplies to my nurses when they are gowned up and stuck in rooms and can't come out. I'm the one that answers their call lights because they're out of ratio. And there's nobody to answer the call lights, so I'm running to the rooms to answer call lights. I'm the one that's making sure the family members get to speak to the patient in the room by running in and making sure they have telephones and a way to answer that call light. They, I am put at risk just like everybody else. I am part of a team that is put at risk just like everybody else. And I do not understand why they are picking and choosing specific groups of people, excuse me, to get hazard pay and COVID pay when we were all part of this team, every single one of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Brandy Jimenez. And then Marissa Guero.
Hi, my name is Brandy Jimenez. I'm a licensed vocational nurse and work at the Arrowhead Regional Medical Center Behavioral Health Emergency Department. I'm here representing not only the emergency department, but all of behavioral health as a whole. The entire building has been specifically excluded from the new COVID incentive as if we're not caring for COVID-positive patients, as if we don't deserve the same compensation that the nurses in the main house are currently receiving. I'm here to inform you that not only do we care for COVID-positive patients, but we care for mentally ill COVID-positive patients on a daily basis. A great deal of our patients can't tell us if they've been diagnosed with or are currently experiencing symptoms of COVID. And the patients that can, won't, because we are holding them against their will on fifty-one fifty holds. But they still have the right to refuse. They still have a right to refuse to be swabbed, and they do. Time and time again, our patients also can't comprehend the importance of wearing a mask, let alone wearing the mask properly. We have three inpatient units in our building with seventy beds which run at full capacity on a daily basis, as well as a seventeen-bed emergency department which we often run on surge, where we have to send our additional emergency department patients to our already full inpatient units to care for until we have open beds. We care for our COVID-positive patients. We clean. We physically clothe and feed them. We treat their wounds, perform all other treatments that are necessary to care for our patients. We do our own blood draws, EKG, specimen collections, and do a full medical head-to-toe assessment as well as thorough interview, all before we receive those results of a positive COVID, which in most cases comes hours and sometimes days later because the tests are taking longer and longer to come in. Our patients come in such an acute state that emergency medication restraints and restraints are necessary to keep them from hurting themselves or others. Ten to fifteen staff members have to physically restrain these patients in order to administer the emergency medications just to find out one to three hours later that they're COVID-positive and our entire emergency department has been exposed. We have had numerous patients who have been admitted to our units who have, who on the third, seventh, and on two occasions, not until the tenth day, start showing symptoms of COVID, and finally test positive, exposing all of our staff and our entire unit, some of which our patients are living there. They're under conservatorship and our facility is their home. I personally COVID screen and swab every patient that enters into our emergency department, or at least attempt to. Our patients come in shackled from West Valley Detention Center, homeless shelters, encampments, group homes, long-term care facilities. Our patients are some of the highest risk for contracting COVID.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Marissa Guero, then Laura Lopez.
Good afternoon. My name is Marissa Guerrero. I am currently in HUA at Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. I work on Four South, which is primarily a COVID unit, a step-down ICU unit. Most, if not all of my patients are on high-flow oxygen or BiPAP machines. Every shift I work, I work twelve hours, sometimes even sixteen hours. That's sixteen hours of my day being exposed to COVID-positive patients. My HUA title doesn't just limit me to answering phones or ordering supplies. It's more than that on a daily basis. I'm there to translate for patients who don't speak English in positive COVID rooms for forty-five minutes to an hour at a time. I'm there helping families arrange FaceTime with patients to the point where I hold patients' hands because they're afraid they're going to die alone in a COVID-positive room. As someone who has not only chronic bronchitis but asthma, I expose myself on a daily basis and risk not only contracting COVID, but taking it home to my three children who are home waiting for me. We leave, this job comes with stress and anxiety and not only affects us, affects our health, but our emotional and mental state. There's days where we experience multiple patient deaths, and that's just something that doesn't leave, you don't forget stuff like that that's easily. So, for us to say we're not deserving of the extra pay is unfair because we do just as much as anybody else in that hospital does. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Laura Lopez, and Letitia Ramirez.
Hi. First, I want to speak to you without a mask. It must be nice to come to work and not have to wear a mask, let alone two, and not to fear that you're going to get sick, bring COVID home to your families. That must be really nice. Hey, my name is Laurel Lopez. I'm an OA-three inside of the emergency room at Arrowhead. When you hear OA-three and Office Assistant Three, I'm sure you think that we're sitting behind a desk, but we're not. We're also excluded from the hazard pay. We are outside in the COVID tent. We are outside. When the patients first walk up, we are the first person that the patient sees. We don't know if they're positive or negative yet, but we're right there with them, even when they are positive and they are in the COVID tent. We have to go inside that tent. We have to get their insurance. We have to do interviews. We have to get their signatures, their insurance cards. We are right there with them. Inside the hospital, we have to go upstairs to the patient's rooms. We have to interview them in there. We have to get consent. This is something we do daily. Inside of the ER, we used to be able to have them in rooms that were enclosed, and that's no longer the case because there is too many patients. They're in open-air rooms now. We're constantly being put at risk and we're constantly scared to bring it home to our families. My team itself, more than half of us have gotten COVID, and I know it has been from at work. We work twelve to eighteen hours a shift. I was working myself seventy-two hours a week. I got COVID in December after getting the vaccine. I missed three weeks of work. The COVID pay was no longer available, so my pay has been decreased. I had to worry. I'm a single mom, and I had to worry about what am I going to do for my family? So, for you guys to exclude us into the hazard pay as well, I feel very upset. I feel like you guys get to sit in your safe areas and meanwhile, you're picking and choosing who gets what. Why don't you guys come down to our hospital and spend a night with us at work and see how safe you feel after that? And then how essential you feel after that, because you say we're an essential worker, but how do you show it? What do you do to show us that? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Laura Lopez, then, no, it was Laura, sorry. Letitia Ramirez.
Hello, my name is Letitia Ramirez. I'm a HUA that works in Two South CVIC unit. I'm going to repeat something that was reported on the Sun on that the San Bernardino County Supervisors on Tuesday generated approved extra pay for county healthcare workers who work extra shifts and retention bonus to keep onboard during a time when it's especially growing, but especially vital to work in healthcare. Eligible employees include nursing nurses, nursing attendants, respiratory therapists, photobiomedicists, and custodians at Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. I'm here to ask you to please include HUAs and security in this. I'm also going to read a couple of my personal experience of duties as a HUA during COVID. Excuse me, I'm nervous. Four North was the first unit at ARMC to open as a COVID unit at the end of March 2020. We came to work and it was converted, no reading prior. As HUAs, we are now required to keep track and monitor all COVID ICU tally patients, monitor which rooms occupy COVID patients, and monitor what nurses are caring for COVID patients. Have RNs, respiratory, and anyone who enters COVID rooms sign paperwork on each shift, after each shift. Order scrubs for staff from the line department. Order extra supply and making sure there's a significant, sufficient, I'm sorry, sufficient N95 masks. Simple masks, isolation gowns, shoe covers and bonnets, wax wipes for each shift by going to nursing's office prior to each shift. Or as needed prior to the shift if supply is run out. If the nursing staff is busy, we obtain bladder scanners, EKG machines, and vein finders from other units, along with our other HUA duties for our unit, not to mention the understandably non-stop phone calls of worried families of patients trying to comfort and ease their worries the best we can. As the weeks progress to months, tally, material management, medical records, dietary, and help desks stop entering the unit due to COVID. So, we were now required to leave the unit to get our own machine supplies. Help desk was not entering units where we're asked to take verbal instructions over the phone to try to reset computers and equipment. Policies were changed weekly, so we had to stay up to date in all changes concerning care and paperwork of COVID patients. Although eventually staff was allowed to rotate in and out of the unit to give nurses relief for caring for COVID patients, the HUAs stayed at the unit. We had no rotating out, still at risk of being exposed, experienced fear and anxiety daily, and the worst, the fear of bringing home COVID to our families daily. Myself and my group of HUAs continued in Four North COVID unit until we were moved in May of 2020. Four Center and Four South have now transitioned into a COVID unit. COVID patients are now hospital-wide to where all units are exposed to COVID patients. We are now in Two South CVICU where we and the unit continues to care for and monitor COVID patients with all the above duties still in place. We are just as much exposed to COVID as RNs, respiratory, and photobiomy. We all play an important part and work hard hand-in-hand to hospital team. I feel strongly, HUAs need.
Thank you, Letitia. Victoria Torres, then Francine Hernandez.
Hello, my name is Victoria Torres. I'm also an HUA in Two South CVICU. We came from Four North, the very first COVID unit being here at Arrowhead Hospital. A lot of our duties remain the same, and also we picked up some extra duties which included just the phone calls and the exposure from the family visitors and constant exposure between us employees. I really still truly feel that the exposure from the patients themselves is one risk, but also within each other because we were still asked to come in, even if we weren't, we had COVID or we felt like we had COVID. But if we were still, if we were feeling okay after a few days, it wasn't the whole fourteen days. I never got COVID luckily. I never felt like I had any symptoms, and I was able to get the first shot, and I was thankful for that. But I really do feel like even though all of this was happening, I still, the hospital expected a lot out of us, especially being in the COVID unit. I really feel like they expected us a lot to just, you know, just kind of be a trooper through it all and just, you know, put aside our anxiety, our feelings from dealing with the phone calls and the family members who do come in, literally being a shoulder to cry on sometimes when family members are there to watch their their loved ones take their last breaths. And I really felt that that was a lot out of us, and it kind of feels a little desensitizing, but we must carry on. I just really feel that everyone in the hospital was truly put at risk. We all got that email saying we were going to be essential or nonessential, but all the faces I would still see every day. I mean, we all showed up. We all were there. So, I really don't feel that they should have picked and chose or decided who was more at deserving of the COVID incentive or just the hazard pay. I really feel like it was all of us. And we're all still at risk. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Francine Hernandez, then Melissa LaSalle.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. First of all, I would like to thank you for allowing us to come here to speak on our behalf. My name is Francine Hernandez, and I'm a HUA for Operator Services at ARMC. I also work various other departments. As you're aware, hospital unit assistants were not included in the differential play paid that many classifications received. From my understanding, quote-unquote, that the HUAs were classified as just being secretaries, which is completely untrue. This not only brought the feeling of being unappreciative, but it also brought this to HUAs across ARMC. HUAs work hard each day to maintain efficiency and productivity in our units, including the COVID units. HUAs have gone above and beyond their call of duties for many years with no recognition, compensation, or promotions. We are the heart and backbone of our departments. Recently, during the COVID pandemic, HUAs have taken on vast amounts of extra shift duties due to staff shortages, as well as due, I'm sorry, I go back, extra shifts due to staff shortages, as well as duties outside of our job descriptions. Some of these duties are matched up to nursing status. Alongside our general duties, we have become patient advocates, patient sitters, translators, patient transporters, lab and blood bank transporters, COVID screeners, pathology specimen transporters, even EVS duties, as well as nursing attendant and alvein duties. The list goes on. I must remind the Board of Supervisors that we never question our superiors of that, of the extra duties because it is listed in our job descriptions as extra department duties. The HUAs are subject to high exposure of COVID-19 just as any nurse or physician. These viruses, this virus has no boundary lines. We actually, we have actually had many HUAs that contracted the virus just as any other employee at ARMC. HUAs are one-hundred percent team players. We believe in the slogan, "There is no I in team." During these times, we have given our one-hundred percent support to our other staff members, yet we are not given the support one-hundred percent in return. Without HUAs, ARMC could not run efficiently. Our units cannot run efficiently, more so during this pandemic. At this time, I ask the Board of Supervisors and ARMC to reconsider and include the HUAs in the differential package.
That's time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Melissa LaSalle.
Okay, my name is Melissa LaSalle. Bear with me. I'm very nervous. I didn't realize that filling out that form was going to, was to speak, so I was not prepared. I didn't know that. But someone just sent me a message, my coworker, my best friend Pauline, and I'm going to read this on her behalf. And she says, "Please, Board of Supervisors, I invite you to come work one day to do a twelve-hour shift with us. We interview positive COVID patients. Our title is Office Assistant Three." I'm a four. She's a three, but. "Who are weak and sick and short of breath. We translate for our Spanish-speaking community. Should we tell them, 'I'm sorry, we can't help you. Sorry if you don't speak up. I can't hear you. I can't hear you because those rule is six feet apart. We can't, it's hard to hear with our masks on. The patients have their mask on, even though they are weak and can't breathe. Again, I invite you to come down, intake ambulance patients, intake patients in the ER who initially arrived saying they have a headache or they have no symptoms, but midway into their care tell staff, 'Oh, yeah, I had a fever' or body aches, but out of fear, didn't let anyone know. Please shadow us for a day, and at the end of your twelve-hour shift, tell me if you feel essential. Tell me if you feel safe to hug your children when you get home." As a matter of fact, come down for two hours and then decide if we're essential. It is our health, not important because of our job title. We are expendable." I am tearful right now because I didn't get to hug my coworker Jeremy, who is in the Security Department, who spoke about his wife and his wife getting COVID. I too got COVID in July, and now I wear two masks because I feel like I don't want to get that again, and it's hard to breathe and do your 12-hour shift or 18-hour shift. It's very hard. And so I know our title says Office Assistant, but we don't sit behind a desk, and we have to do medical applications when they don't have insurance, so we gotta go interview them again. It's not just the one time I'm gonna see you, and then that's it. I don't have to talk to you anymore. We have to help these patients, and we would like you guys to come down there and see that we also deserve hazard pay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I believe I was notified the next three are, had to leave because of the timing. Ralph Lopez Blanco, and then Lupi Ramirez, and then Christa Cunter.
Yes, they all had to go back to work.
Thank you. Okay, the next one we have is Steve Howness, and then Angelica Rizzo.
Good morning. My name is Steve Howness. I work at ARMC in the Security Department, and everything that I've heard from my coworkers is 100% true. Security sees every single patient that comes in that hospital. We screen them. We go through their property. If we have a 5150, a hold, we have to go through all their property in their room with them. We do have to use our MAB techniques to protect ourselves and staff from aggressive patients. We also have to hold down these COVID patients and help staff restrain them as they're biting, spitting, kicking, punching. But somehow, we're left out of this essential worker pay and this hazard pay. Not to mention the dead bodies that we have to physically lift sometimes, which is outside of our classification list, I checked. What we're left out of this pay. I challenge you like my other coworkers have, come down, work with us, deal with us, and what we have to deal with, and see how you feel. Every single person that works in that hospital deserves that pay. Everybody. Because COVID is all throughout that hospital. I don't care if you're on the sixth floor, or if you're in the lower lobby, or in the lower floor. BH, main house, everywhere. I advocate for everybody in that hospital get that pay. Man up and do the right thing.
Angelica Rizzo, and Courtland Thomas.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Angelica Rizzo, and I am advocating for COVID-19 pay for all workers at Arrowhead Regional Medical Center. I am a hospital unit assistant at Arrowhead Regional Medical Center, and this may will be my five-year mark working for the county. Arrowhead Regional Medical Center has been my home for almost five years now, and I see my coworkers more than my own family because I work 60 hours a week in 84-hour pay periods. That's not including the OT I've picked up to help alleviate the burden of this pandemic. I love Arrowhead, but as of late, it has become somewhere I almost dread going to. I've been working COVID ICU since May of last year. It has been, for lack of better words, hell. I, along with the nurses, all went together, all together went through the waves of lack of PPE, waves of fear, waves of unknown, and sorrow. I often find myself sitting in the parking lot before going in, bracing myself to go in, in hopes that maybe tonight we will only have to bag one or two bodies. I've spent the past 1,400 hours of my job, respectively, running blood samples to the lab, picking up blood for patients, wiping down phones, doors, walls, cabinets, and just about any surface me and my fellow nurses touch, putting in stat orders for coding patients. I've helped stack bodies in our refrigerator trailer, we call a mobile morgue. I've run body bags to other units because we're constantly running low on them. I've grabbed supplies for nurses who are in active codes and cannot leave the room. I've spent countless hours over time consoling grieving family members over the phone or in person while they attempt to bargain with me, me, of their lost loved ones. I've been screamed at, cried at, and even almost pushed. Infuriatingly and insultingly enough, I find that despite being with this county for almost five years, I've been told that us HUAs and others will not be getting the COVID incentive pay. Currently, after five years, my base pay is less, less than a 16-year-old working at In-N-Out, my base pay. I am in fact at a loss for words. I love my job, and I love my work family, but I am just as important as my fellow nurses and doctors and staff. I've cried, and I've screamed, and I've sweat all night along with my fellow nurses the past year. If this is an issue of exposure, I can assure you, we are exposed daily. If this is an issue of work ethic, I can assure you that all of us here for Teamsters today work hard every single day. We are all important parts of this hospital. I miss my family who I haven't seen in months. I am more than a title. We all are. And that's it.
Thank you for your comments, Courtland Thomas.
I just want to say first, I did not dress appropriately for this thing, but I will tell you, this is kind of the person I am. I'm one of the ER techs that work at Arrowhead, and everyone's telling you to come in and see what we are doing and like just experience it, but I'll tell you right now, there is some things you gotta worry out for, because just two weeks ago, we had a guy pull a sword on us. Four months ago, I got kicked straight in the head, and if you guys know Rico, you know how it is in the jails. We deal with a lot of combat patients with also dealing with this COVID. And just like Angelica just said, I'm being paid less than the In-N-Out guy, and that's hard because I'm doing blood, we are doing blood draws, we are doing EKGs, we're working with these patients, and we are surviving, lasting into so many tussles and fights, because as even Steve said, we're in the thick of it with jail, not jail patients, but security. Security is alongside with us, and we're just like, it's hard, it's hard to fathom sometimes, like, it makes you think like, if I could go anywhere else in the world, would it still be this kind of like, would it still be this tough for just people to get by and by? I'm 27 right now, no kids, but I can't even think of having kids if I'm being, if us as a community and a group are not adequately being treated as well as everyone else. It's really disheartening. Like I said, I didn't really script, write a script or anything, this is all coming from the heart right here, and it's tough. And I understand that if you do come out here to see us in action, you're gonna be very appalled by the kind of community that you see come in, because we, we're still gonna be the same people day in, day out, day in. But the people who come in chastise us, wrestle with us, literally fight us to the ground because they want to see our loved ones, they want more treatment, they're like, "Oh, why can't I go inside?" We're like, "Well, it's COVID. Not everyone's gonna be in the lobby." And the moment, like, there was this one reiterating patient, always just reads off her thing, tries to go through our COVID trailer screening thing, and then she is combative the whole time through. We can't even blacklist her. It's like, we need, there is so much that we need that is not being addressed, and it's like, I don't know what else to say. We're all trying to express our deepest emotion to you, like, hey, the hospital is suffering deeply. It's tough out here. And that's my closing statement. If you can look into it to just see what it's like on a day-to-day, and think of a pay increase, or think of like, what's it called, incentive pay or anything, that would help a lot, and that's it.
That's time.
Thank you for your comments. That's all requests to speak I have at this time. Thank you all for being patient and getting through, waiting for us to get to you. We will be closing the public comment section. And ask for individual board comments at this point.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, we still have one discussion item, item number 73.
I'm sorry. Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing. This is the Community Development Housing Department, proposed provisions, County Board of Supervisors, Annual Action Plan that allows a county, and we're gonna be presented to by Gary. Good morning, Gary, or good afternoon, Gary.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Gary Hallen, Community Development Housing Department. Today's public hearing is to obtain public comments and seek the board's approval for the amended HUD annual plan. HUD requires us to bring any plan amendments by public hearing anytime we're adding additional allocation. HUD has added some additional allocation of 4.5 million to our CDG program for COVID relief. That breakdown is basically 2.1 to our cooperating cities. We have 13 participating cities that partner with us on our CDPG program, so that will go towards them, and we'll work with them on those projects and bring those projects that they decide on back to this board. And then 1.9 million will go toward a home key-funded project, the Pacific Build Project, which will rehabilitate 28 units for those impacted by COVID, specifically for homeless families and individuals. The balance will be for administrative work, working with HUD on our COVID-related projects and programs. As we work with our cities and with the county on these, on these projects, we're looking forward to getting these dollars invested, assisting families, and helping communities and aid in their recovery. That's my report. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from staff? Any requests to speak on this item?
No, sir.
We'll close the public hearing, bring it back for action by the board. We're taking a motion to approve the update. So move.
Second.
We got a motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we'll move the board comments. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll stop with Supervisor Baca.
Thank you, Chairman Hagman. Had that opportunity to attend a 1,500, the 1,500 homeless veteran event that the county put on. So back in 2015, the San Bernardino County Homeless Veterans Initiative was created to try to help those veterans that were homeless get off the streets. So had an opportunity to go and in conjunction with the County of San Bernardino and our staff, and I really want to commend them. I think we have to continue this program, not only continue this program, but hopefully ramp it up and improve it. I know homelessness is a big challenge in our county, but one of the veterans that I had an opportunity to see, her name was Miyoko Toy, and just watching the expression on her face, how excited she was about having a roof over her head. She actually served in the United States Navy almost four years, and just her expression, her thought, her gratitude to the county and county staff for an opportunity to have a roof over her head, and she was excited. I actually went to go visit her the next day. She was there cooking, and it was just a great thing. It was a great thing, you know, showing compassion for people in our community. I think this is a great program, so hats off to the County of San Bernardino for adopting this in 2015. Hopefully, we can continue more with many more programs like this. Also, you know, just, I'm willing to take the invitation for the hospital staff which came here. I'd be willing to go there for a couple of hours and spend time with them. Although I could spend the night, I think my wife would have an issue with that, but I would be willing to go visit the staff. And I appreciate all the Teamsters and ARMC employees that came here, shared their thoughts, their passion, their concern, their anger, their frustration in regards to the pay and some of the things that they're exposed to, especially security, when security are asked to move bodies of deceased, which may or may not be in their scope of duty, but it's what they're willing to do. And hopefully in the future, we could take in consideration giving the same type of, some type of bonus pay for them. Not only that, but make it retro and potentially go back to when the others received the pay. And I, we could take a look at some CARESAC money. I know it's not an agendized item, but it's hopefully something we can consider in the future, because, you know, you're at a hospital, you're being exposed to many people, many people that are exposed to COVID, you're hands-on. I just think we have to show some compassion for our county employees. I just want to thank all of them for coming here today and sharing their stories with us, but I would be happy to schedule an appointment with my staff to at least go for a couple hours and visit the ARMC hospital. So, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for your comments, Supervisor Baca. Vice Chair.
Leonard, along the same lines, Supervisor Baca, can you explain to us the limitations of the COVID funding that we had from the federal level, what we can and can't do, and what we might be able to do in the future in terms of what we heard today?
Sure. Thank you, Supervisor. And I think.
I just wanted to make sure, are we allowed to talk about this? Because it's not an agendized item, and we're starting to get into policy and direction, and I'm concerned.
Probably the better way to do it was, would be to direct staff to come back with an item if you want to have a discussion on that.
Yes. So it's better that we bring this up as a gen item than give opinions on that stuff and before we agendize the staff presentation.
We'll bring back an item, Chairman and Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Supervisor Cook.
Yeah, I, these meetings are really, really tough when you go through people that you know, and they've passed away. In fact, we talked about one individual that served on a lot of different boards over the years. And this is something that's gonna be a weekly, monthly occurrence. I'm always looking forward to how we can get the word out, make contact with a lot of folks. That's why I brought up the comment about making sure that the seniors know about this, that we can reach out. This is, we're in the midst of, as I said earlier, meetings, the biggest issue that I have faced in my lifetime, and you want to do it right, and it's, sometimes, you know, people, I would just hope that we use the KISS principle. Keep it simple, stupid. I think in government, sometimes we give them a 10-page list of instructions, where you have to go, and everything like that. They just want the bare essentials on this, on where they can go, and this and that, particularly seniors. And so any way we can do that, suggestions from the public perhaps, on how we can reach out to have people that are living by themselves or certain homes, and they, they don't, they get confused. I get confused when you call up and find out some of the messages, and I know there were some corrections made by the board members, but this is a day-to-day thing. It's like, you know, just think you're on the other side with these people. Our job is, we gotta make sure they get the word, they get when the visits are, and forget all the crap about filling out a form or what have you, you got people that are dying out there. So I think this, this is a very emotional meeting, obviously. There's a lot of people that are on the front lines of this every day, and it's tough. You know, I sympathize with a lot of the speakers, and I can, I can kind of remember 100 years ago, being in a combat situation, you know. It was almost harder when they took you out of the field, you know, eight, nine months, other than when you're medevaced or what have you, because then you're back and you look at the casualty lists of people that were wounded or killed. And when I was an infantry commander, I'm out there, you see that, but you, you don't realize how many people are affected by this on, on a daily basis. And when you're on the front lines there, and you see it, I think it's very difficult to deal with. So, short time, I want to commend the staff on all these issues. I would, I'll be honest with you, you're dealing with Paul Cook, I'm not as smart as my colleagues here. I'm just a dumb Marine. I like executive summaries, you know, instead of reading 85,000 pages. And then I have, thank God, I got an acronym list, so I can understand most of the big words. And I appreciate your patience in dealing with me, that I want to get to the guts of it so I can understand it, digest it, and then come back and make your life miserable. I'm only kidding on that, but really, I know you've put up with a lot lately, and I'm pretty, very proud of the staff and the job you're doing in a crisis. very proud of the staff and the job you're doing in a crisis situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Cook. I just want to say thank you all for attending today's meeting. We're going to adjourn shortly. I'm hoping that, Leonard, that we could have also, since we're starting to see a little bit light at the end of the tunnel and hopefully continue on this right direction, that we come back with maybe some plans on both what we're hearing from federal Congress as far as the CARES 4, what that may bring up. And we hear it's being debated, you know, as something rushed to get out of there, but also really what we can do to partner up with our residents, with our small businesses, what are some of the expectations that they may have going forward with our economic development team as the world comes out or as California comes out of the current COVID situation? What are we looking at a couple of months down the line and maybe try to get ahead of those programs? Really work with our groups that we've been communicating throughout this whole crisis and come up with some pragmatic plans that maybe we can partner up and really try to get the economy going again and get people back to work. So that's something that we could try to work on, maybe some of these federal resources and continue to maybe come back with reports, what we could do if the CARES funding comes in and how we're looking on our budget and what areas we can spend on, so.
Yeah, we'd be happy to bring back a report on those items. Thank you, Chairman.
And I want to thank Bill and Matthew and the whole team at Arrowhead and all the staff are just been exemplary through this crisis and continue to work on day-in, day-out. We heard a lot of stories today and everyone's putting 110% of their efforts into taking care of our residents in San Bernardino County and thank you. And we, we heard at the beginning of this meeting, a lot of sorrow, a lot of people from all walks of life, from our county family to our friends and in some cases relatives that have succumbed to this virus. And we know that the team effort to try to be on every aspect all the time is not just a momentous task at a short period of time, but continuing for a year straight of that is just exemplary. So thank you for Team San Bernardino for continuing to do such a fantastic job. We're very proud of your continued efforts and we want to be here to support any of those efforts we can. With that, we'll adjourn until February 9th. I got that right? Okay, yes, February 9th at 10:00 AM here. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.